Order, I would like you are swearing in. And if you would, I have two councilmembers, if you would, that just were re-elected in the fall, if you would, come forward. I, Anson Navy-
I, Anson Navy-
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will well and truly perform-
That I will well and truly perform-
The duties of councilmember-
The duties of councilmember-
Of the city of Jasper-
Of the city of Jasper-
That I will support-
That I will support-
And defend the charter-
And defend the charter-
Thereof.
Thereof.
As well as the Constitution-
As well as the Constitution-
And laws of the state of Georgia-
And laws of the state of Georgia-
And of the United States of America-
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Good practice.
Yeah, good practice. God should be with you.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Office of councilmember. I, Dr. Folsom C. Proctor III-
I, Dr. Folsom C. Proctor III-
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will well and truly-
That I will well and truly-
Perform the duties of councilmember-
Perform the duties of councilmember-
Of the city of Jasper-
Of the city of Jasper-
And that I will support-
And that I will support-
And defend the charter thereof-
And defend the charter thereof-
As well as the Constitution-
As well as the Constitution-
And laws of the state of Georgia-
And laws of the state of Georgia-
And of the United States of America-
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All the time. At college, being in order. John, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Dear Lord, please help guide us to make the right decisions, especially in the city. Be with our EMS and our policemen and our firemen. Be with our city employees, especially through these terrible conditions that we've had through the weather. Please be with everybody that we've got serving overseas. Please, please, fail protect them. In your name of prayer.
Amen.
And would you please reflect?
To declare the United States of America into a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have a copy of the agenda. Hope you've had an opportunity to look over it. Would entertain a motion.
We accept the agenda as distributive.
Motion to approve the agenda as distributive?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. Ms. Hoyle, the minutes of the December 4th, 2017, regular meeting?
Regular council meeting, Monday, December 4th, 2017. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 P.M. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invocation. Councilmember Jim Loney does not cite the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hoyle read the minutes of the November 6th, 2017, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hoyle read the minutes of the November 13th, 2017, public hearing. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under Old Business Finance Director, Lisa Hoyle presented the 2018 operating budget for council approval and read the budget adoption resolution. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to adopt the resolution, read and to adopt the 2018 budget as presented. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Following discussion, motion carried by unanimous vote. Item B, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Jim Loney for an update from the parochial local property committee. Councilmember Loney stated that the inspection of the buildings have not been, have not taken place. Mayor Weaver stated that the inspection was scheduled for this next week. Item C, under Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Anson Navy regarding updates on personnel policy committee. Councilmembers Navy stated that there had been no action by the committee since the last council meeting. Mayor Weaver stated that the decision is to remain on the agenda next month under Old Business. Item A, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Kirk Ratfield with the Jasper Merchants Association to present for council's approval needs for the New Year's Eve celebration. Mr. Ratfield handed out a list of items that the JMA had planned for this celebration. He stated that the city had to pay signed contract with DJ Dano and was obligated to pay the DJ $2,518 whether or not the celebration took place. He also stated that the JMA wanted to close Main Street and needed the city to deliver and pick up the city stage. He also stated that he was asking the city to contribute additional, an additional $1,260 to cover paid off-duty officers for security for the event. He stated that the sheriff had said that prison inmates would clean up the city after the event. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to honor the contract with the DJ to contribute $1,260 to the JMA. Councilmember Jim Loney amended the motion to add that liability insurance be purchased by the JMA and the city be named as an insured party for their event. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the amended motion. Following discussion, the motion passed unanimously. Item B, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Joe Walker with Point North Insurance to discuss our upcoming liability and workers' compensation insurance renewals. Mr. Walker stated that the city's current liability insurance company, Black Filters, annual premium, decreased annual premium, decreased $2,000 over 2017. Mr. Walker presented a comparison of Black Filter to Travelers Insurance Company and based on the coverages that Black Filter offer, he recommended that the city stay with its current carrier of Black Filter. Mayor Weaver entertained the motion. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion that the city use Black Filter for its liability insurance for 2018. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Walker stated for workers' compensation insurance, the city would have an increase in 2018 due to the experience from claims. He stated that we could reduce our increase by adding a deductible. He stated that with zero deductible, annual cost would be $192,277. $1,000 deductible cost would be at $187,128. And for 2,500 deductible cost would be $183,241. He stated that he had a quote from Travelers as well, that they would not cover us for workers' compensation unless we packaged it with liability. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the quote with the 2,500 deductible. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Councilmember Jim Loney asked to amend the motion to add that the city implement a safety plan. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Walker stated that the city would be required by law to offer cancer coverage to firefighters for 2018 at an annual cost of $3,009,24. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion that the city purchase the cancer insurance as required by House Bill 160. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Proctor, Sonny Underwood, Director of Planning and Funding, to present to council the 2018 alcohol license renewal application. See list attached here too. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the license renewal request and Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item D, under New Business, Mr. Underwood presented an application for selling alcohol, beer and wine by the drink from N.R. Garfarzada for I Love New York Pizza of Jasper, LLC, located at 70 Deco Street. Mr. Underwood stated that the background check had been received and there's nothing that would prevent him from obtaining, obtaining an alcohol license. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item E, under New Business, Mr. Underwood presented the Jasper Planning Commission report. Mr. Underwood stated that he was presenting a report for Robert Walker, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Mr. Underwood stated that on November 16th, 2017, the Planning Commission heard a request for the annexation of parcel 041 OU4104 of 24.06 acres to the annex into the city limits. Mr. Underwood informed the council that the Planning Commission had recommended to approve the annexation of this parcel owned by Amacola Electric Membership Corporation located at 544 Highway 510 South as C2 general commercial property. Mr. Underwood stated that the property owners had completed all required advertising signage and public notices. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to annex map and parcel number 041 OU4104 into the city limits. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F, under New Business, Mayor Weaver stated that he had been contacted by Jim Loney who wanted to build a crematory on Noah Drive, which is zoned as C2 property. Mayor Weaver stated that our ordinance had not been changed to allow a crematory as C2. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to table this zoning change until more information could be obtained. Discussion followed. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Economic Development Committee, Net Patel gave a report. City Finance Director Lisa Hoyle gave a financial report for the month of November 2017. Lonnie Waters gave a report on Rose. Chief Redlow gave a report of police activities for the month of November 2017. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of the activities, of fire activities for the month of November 2017. Councilmember John Faust gave a report on JYSI. Being no other business to come before council, councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next, if a regular council meeting will be held January 8th, 2018.
There's another motion.
I'm making a motion with several reasons.
Motion to approve the minutes as read. Sir, motion is second. Discussion. Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. If you catch me moving a little quickly tonight, Mr. Roper promised me if we didn't get home in time to watch the national championship, he was gonna fake a heart attack. And I wouldn't be sure if he's fucking up being a real. But that being said, next item, business organization meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the council to appoint one of their own as the mayor pro team. We have in the ordinances and charter that this is bi-annually, but we have been doing it annually, so I'd like to continue that. Maybe next year we'll then serve two times. Would entertain a motion, our heart, whichever case may be.
I'll make a motion for John Faust to, for mayor pro team.
Motion for John Faust to serve as mayor pro team.
I'll second that.
Got a motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, will we show our hands? Two, three, four. Okay. John, congratulations. Two, three, four, two years old, Jim. Okay. Next item is the election of the city manager position. And in the past, we've handed that to the mayor pro team to run the meeting. Jim, if you will pass that down. John?
Okay, we need to make a, make a, good for city manager. Did I have any nominations?
I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead. Jim Loney.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I make a motion to appoint John Weaver, city manager.
Okay, we have a motion for John Weaver and Jim Loney. Let's do it by show of hands. Since Jim was nominated first, nomination for Jim.
Two.
I see two.
Yep.
Okay, nomination for Johnny Weaver. I see one. I will pass this right then.
You want to talk about?
Mayor, I make the motion to move into executive session to discuss a personnel issue.
Okay. I hate to ask all of you. If you would, still in right and be, election or appointment of the city manager, I'd like to recognize Mr. Loney, who would like to recognize his body to set his conditions of employment.
During the closed session, I see conditions of employment for me moving into the city manager's job. I call for a, a motion.
Explain that again.
I'm asking for a motion from council to vote on my conditions that were discussed in the-
I'd like to know conditions to the public.
They need to, they need to, out of my eyes.
Yeah, we need to understand, the public needs to understand what we're asking for. How those conditions was-
The salary was at $84,000. It would be a position until a full-time, excuse me, not full-time, I would be full-time, until a, another city manager could be obtained, giving the, giving the city time to set job description and interview candidates. There is a question on whether I could continue as a city councilman. I think I would like to have an opinion from, we have one from our, our city manager. I'd like to have a written opinion on that, whether it's from our city manager-
City attorney, you mean?
City attorney. I would anticipate this being a six to nine month period.
Okay, let me make sure I've got it correct. You're asking for a contract? Because you're an employee, you would be an employee at will, just like Mr. Weaver is at the present time.
It would still be an employee at will. I don't see that this case is a contract.
Your employment could end tomorrow.
I could be voted out tomorrow for our next regular scheduled meeting. So I don't know that it-
So the balance of what you said about until this time in the morning about a six to nine month period, that, that has no meaning. In other words, you're asking for $84,000 a year salary-
Yes.
-to be, become employed tonight, based upon your election or appointment. And that would contend, and that salary will continue until at such time as you're no longer city manager.
Yes.
Also, that he would have to resign his position as councilman tonight.
And I've already given that opinion that he would have to do that. And I don't mind putting it right in all over my letterhead. But that is my opinion.
The other thing is, I do have an obligation to my current employer, the state of Georgia. There needs to be a discussion on how that two-week period would be handled.
Well, either you're asking, you're agreeing to the job tonight, or you're agreeing to the job at some point in the future.
Some point in the future being a two-week notice from tomorrow, what I could give.
So he would be the city manager within the two weeks. The city can't function in two weeks without having city manager.
The city, the city has, has a city manager until at such time as that city manager position is filled. And it's not filled when Mr. Loney requests to not come to work for two weeks. Mr. Proctor, you'd like to respond?
Earlier, we talked about there not being a requirement to have a city manager. Now I'm hearing that there is a requirement that we have one.
You didn't hear that from me. Explain, Jim.
What I said was, is, Mr. Loney is requesting $84,000 a year to be paid to him as city manager during the time that he is, during the time that he is city manager for the city of Jasper, if I understand that right. And that's all.
Because they not do that now with his resignation as council?
They can do.
But we need a resignation, and then they can appoint you as city manager.
But he can't, he can't become, he cannot become, in my opinion, he cannot become a city manager until at such time as he does resign from the council.
We also have the two-week interim time that has to be dealt with.
Well, they don't have to give you that period if they don't want to.
Or they, or they can't.
Or they can't, either way. But my question is, if Jim's gonna work a two-week notice from now to two weeks from now, who's gonna be our city manager? This city cannot function two weeks without city manager. That's not my opinion, I mean, that's not my job is to hire and fire. I, I, I understand that I'm posing that question to the rest of my councilmembers.
I would suggest there had to be one appointed as interim city manager.
He doesn't want to say that he will do that.
I can do it, I'll do it.
I mean, I'm asking that, in that, what he said.
John, do you say you would do it?
I would do it. So you're going to-
If you give me a resignation tonight, I will serve as city manager until you're appointed by the council. And in two weeks, we have a call meeting, and they can appoint you city manager.
So you're gonna finish out being a city manager for two weeks after this council has sat here and voted you out? Well, I told you before we called the group in, that you come first, and that'll be my candidate.
Would it be, will the council make it February 1st and give it a clean, clean period?
Entertain a motion.
Senator, would you stake?
Would you take the motion?
The motion that we have you as city manager until February 1st and Jim become city manager.
And upon his resignation this evening, because we're gonna need to call for an election.
Can't call for an election until-
Not, not, we're gonna, we're gonna need, as soon as we get the resignation, we can proceed.
With the-
Do you need to, I mean, does he need his own legal advice, or he, we have enough to go on? I mean, I'm just asking for the discussion that we-
Well, if you're asking me that question, my job, as I explained to everybody earlier, I represent the city council of the city of Jasper. I do not represent each councilman individually.
Or mayor.
Or the mayor.
We've got a motion that has to be voted on. Can I, do I need to amend that concerning resignation? Or do we vote on this one the way it is and have another motion?
Give me the motion again, Ann.
I make the motion that we have you as city manager until February 1st for him to be the city manager.
And be replaced at that time. And Bill, touch on the resignation again. We're appointing one of our own as some councilmembers clearly can't be city manager.
You can't appoint them. You can't.
But we'll appoint him in, first meeting in February.
No, because that decision may change.
Well, you can give him a resignation anytime this month.
Yeah, he can do that.
Then in January, I mean, in February, we can have the meeting, and the council's gonna appoint him as city manager.
Do that.
Okay. Like this wire, that, 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 maybe pull the lever. Okay, is that the motion? First meeting in February, upon the resignation of Mr. Jim Loney, councilmember, council will be able to appoint him as city manager. Is that the motion? Give me, need a, need a second. Need a second.
Second.
Got a motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Three, four? All opposed? One against, one abstained? Okay, thank you, council. And I apologize to our guests this evening. I didn't think it'd be quite this long. Item C, on your agenda, review and approval of annual positions appointments. Council, if you bear with me, I'll just read through these. On the planning and zoning board commission, we have Ms. Walker Poole, whose term is up, and I would entertain a motion to approve her for another term. Now, these terms are for four years, or three?
Three.
Three, three years.
Three.
Okay. Would entertain a motion. Got a motion to approve? Motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. That's unanimous. Next item, Mr. Jeff Dobson, living in Fox Run, has agreed to serve as the planning and zoning board's appeals. Would entertain a motion to pay no attention to that date there. Well, it wouldn't be that date. Would entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Jeff Dobson? Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. Was that unanimous? Downtown Development Authority of the city of Jasper, Mr. Marty Callahan and Chuck Payne have been members for years. Their terms are up. Would look forward to those guys being reappointed. Got a motion to approve? Be second.
Second.
Got a motion is second. Discussion. Being in all favor, will we show our hands? That is, do you vote John?
Second.
That's unanimous. The tree board, which is continuation of the downtown development authority, we have Mark Poole and Chuck Payne to approve. Would entertain a motion to approve those two? Got a motion to approve, that's Jim, need a second. Got a motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, the housing authority, Ms. Mary Perkins, term is up. Ms. Dobson, Ms. Ann Dobson asked me if we'd be willing to reappoint her. I said I will make the recommendation to council. Would entertain a motion? Got a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. Piggis County Board of Health, Mary Gorley, da, 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 da. Council committees, I've got finance, Jim Loney, John Faust. Personnel committee, Anson Navy, Dr. Proctor. Water committee, Tony Fountain. Public safety, Dr. Sonny Proctor. Streets, Anson Navy. Parks, John Faust, Anson Navy. JYSI liaison, John Faust. Black committee, John Faust, Anson Navy. Roper parole property, Jim Loney, Sonny Proctor. Would entertain a motion to approve those as presented? Got a motion to approve? Got a motion is second. Any discussion? Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. Under Old Business, alcohol license application approval, Mr. Underwood. We have New York Pizza.
I love New York Pizza.
I love New York Pizza.
Mayor, council, this is the, Mr. N.R. Garfarzada.
Kizumta.
Thank you. He, he is, he is in the process of completing his due diligence in his alcohol license. He's doing the, he has done the, the, everything in the paper and the sign out in front of his building stating what he's doing. So tonight, we need to approve his license. You need to approve his license.
Okay, this will be the final approval before you'll be able to buy the license after this. Entertain a motion.
Will be approved.
Got a motion to approve, the New York, I Love New York Pizza. Motion is second. Discussion. Being in all favor, will we show our hands? Thank you, council. That's unanimous. Crematory ordinance. Council, please, gentlemen, all of you, come up and introduce yourselves to the council.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is, this crematory, this is about a funeral home, Anna.
I understand. And I could, I just bumped it on, let them explain to you. If you want to sit right here, I give you some argument.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that-
Okay, that, that's why we're going to- Please, introduce yourselves, please, and tell us what's, what's your presentation- Please, introduce yourselves, please, and tell us what's, uh, what your presentation is pertaining to the crematory slash funeral home.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Don Ware Jr., my wife Kimberly, um, one of our employees, uh, Lane Ross, and then, of course, our broker for the property that we're purchasing, Richard Jordan. And then we have, uh, Russell, oh, in the back, and we have Tom, uh-
Clayton.
Clayton, excuse me, who is a company representative of the crematory that we're looking to purchase from.
And you have with you also a guest.
Yes, that would be Mayor Steve Miller, who is the mayor down at, uh, Hallspringe.
Okay. You will have a seat there, if you will, make yourself comfortable. Council, if you recall, at the last council meeting, uh, we discussed this, and I was concerned about it being in the ordinance as C2, and from that time until the workshop, we did some research, and we presented, presented to the council all the documentation pertaining to funeral homes, uh, crematories slash C2, uh, commercial development, commercial property. Let's hear what you got.
Well, our, our plans are to, it's a full-fledged funeral home and crematory on-site. So, we assume the fact that we already have one funeral home here in the, in the city, that being Roper Funeral Home, that actually has a crematory on-site, I understand. We assumed that we could do the same. We'd love to bring the business here. Uh, I'm originally from Piggins County, went to school here, I did not graduate, but went all the way up to the 10th grade, and then we, uh, my dad moved us to Cherokee County. So, I'm not a stranger to the county, I'm, I'm, I'm one of, one of, one of y'all. And, and I'm looking to bring the business back here, back home. Is where I'd really like to, uh, open the funeral home here. So, the actual name of the funeral home is called In Their Honor, a funeral home, or funeral and cremation care is the, is the name that we are, uh, we have right now on, as the, being the name of the, of the funeral home. But it will be a 4,000 square foot, the plan is a 4,000 square foot, uh, building. One level, of course, it'll have a chapel, it'll have a prep room, it'll have, uh, everything that the state requires to meet the funeral home, uh, requirements. And the per, one of the main reasons we'd, we'd really like to have the crematory on-site is because, apparently what I've learned is over time, is that the older funeral homes that are established throughout the state of Georgia, now are having to have a location off-site, somewhere away from, um, their facilities now because of zoning requirements and so forth. So, if we could have that on, onsite, then when we take, uh, a loved one into our care, we're not transporting them to another county, uh, or to another city to get that, uh, that cremation completed for the family. We'll actually have them in our, in our own facility, where they would, they would not be leaving the county. So that, that's, I mean, that, in a nutshell, that's, that's, that's us. We're just wanting to open a, a funeral home here in, uh, in the city. We'd like to, we'd like to keep it in the city, of course, uh, rather than out in the county, but, uh-
Let me ask you, will you store castings there and embalming, uh, as well?
Yes, sir, yeah, we're required by the state to have those items, uh, on, on the grounds. Yes, sir, we will meet the state requirement, absolutely.
Questions, council?
When we have an ordinance like this, Sonny, who, um, who ver, is it their business license? Do we validate their licensing and make sure they have all the specific things before we issue a license? Or, not just this particular case, but in any case? How's that, how's that, is that you that does that?
Well, uh, Ms. William probably will do that now because she does, uh, business license.
Okay.
But, uh, if, if they needed somebody to check it out, yes, my office will.
So there's a spec, there's a list or something where you see that the state requires registration and, or licensing, and, and we verify that before the license is issued?
Yes.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah, let me ask you for that question. Uh, what responsibilities do you have to state agencies for your licensing?
They would, they would have to approve before we could open up for business.
Okay, and you have to be a certified, uh, funeral director, funeral director in order to do embalming, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, the state requires a, what they call a funeral director that's in full and continuous charge.
Okay, and you'll have those required by the state?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Is the crematory something above and beyond that, or is that funeral director license?
As long, as what I understand, sir, as long as the bit, the crematory is inside the same building, then, then he's, then it's covered, is what I understand. Good, you have questions? Typically, it varies state to state, but typically, there is a requirement by the state EPA. Georgia does have their requirement, so there is an EPA requirement for the crematory, which is independent of the funeral home itself.
Are any of y'all funeral directors?
None of them.
So you'd have to hire someone?
Yes, sir, we got, we, we have that thing here.
Any other questions?
Where is the property, where is the property?
Uh, I understand it's Route 10 on Noah Road. It's right down from the, down studio, studio that sits right there in, in Kirk.
Okay, so, C2?
That's what I understand, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
While we move on, approving their request. Before it's built or, but you can tell us-
We'll prove, we'll prove that they want to do this, they want to put this in there. And they ask for us to, to verify all the things that we've had. So I entertain a motion that they be allowed to move forward with, with the application.
We already had an ordinance that allowed that.
Well, then I guess we had a good meeting tonight. I would like the council to bless us, because there was some conflict on, uh, the definition of the, of the, uh, amendment to the chapter 4, 94, article 1, section 94 dash 2, Sonny, yes?
No, I have a question.
Okay.
I was just, I was going to ask, that's in compliance with our amendment?
Yes. That's a full, uh, funeral home, a building used for human services, such building contains a chapel. You're going to contain a chapel?
It will, sir.
It may include space and facilities for embalming?
Yes, sir.
And the performance of other services used in the preparation of the dead for burial or cremation?
Correct.
The performance of autopsies? It would be a bad-
Really?
Okay. And other surgical procedures? The indoor storage of castings?
Yes, sir.
Funeral urns?
Yes, sir.
And other related funeral supplies, and the indoor storage of funeral vehicles?
Yes, sir.
In addition, the actual cremation of the dead may occur within the building or necessary buildings.
Yes, sir.
So, do you care if we don't give you a motion, or just move forward with your application?
I just want y'all to be happy and good, like you said, I like that.
It may not happen, do you even know you want to? We're going forward with it.
We, we, we just will come here and do business. And take care of our folks here.
Well, accepting the application is the morning starting about 8:00. But thank you for coming.
Thank you all, it's very much.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah, one more thing.
Be careful, there might be an elevator coming.
The boat's already been taken, or I'm about to-
That's all I waited. We're not very local here. Nice to meet you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, thanks to the council. Okay, item C, parole property, pool property, Mr. Looney, you want to move forward with this on?
Yeah, we have gotten a, uh, the special report that we discussed, uh, at our prior meeting, has been accomplished, there are issues that validation that have been noted in the, um, inspection, uh, by the 10th, uh, after direction from council, and our, um, work session is to, uh, within the next 30 days, get the industrial authority who owns the property, parole property, and roper, I guess, also. And also the little board that we put together, or commission that we put together, concerning use of that property, getting them together, and coming up with ideas that council can look at.
Anything else? Under do business, Liberty Lane Pump Station, Mr. Hawke.
Um, first item, the, we, uh, talked about at the workshop the other night is the 87 or 72 horsepower, 35, 50 RPM motor. Uh, I have the sheets, and I give everybody a copy of things, uh, total on. This pump is $39,431.40. This is under the budget amount, which was $40,000. We've got, we've got with the black model, or it stays with the same panel and stuff that is presently under the old motor.
Did you say the budget number, please?
$40,000, yes. And this is the second motor that we had talked about buying next budget year. We bought one new one last year, and a new check out there, which were installed, and this one will complete that station.
Entertain a motion to approve? Give me the amount again?
$39,431.40.
$39,431, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve, spend $39,431.
Up to $40,000, that's in the budget? Add that to it, John?
Add the $40,000.
Second, got a motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor with your hands? Thank you, council. Return sludge pump at the Wakeport Funeral Plant?
Yes, uh, this will be a smaller motor, uh, that's just at the Wakeport plant, that all it does is return the sludge that goes to the car fire back through the basin, so it don't really have a lot of head on it or anything, so, so it's just a pretty little power motor. Uh, in the budget was, uh, $6,500. The, we're coming a little bit lower on it, or the quote, uh, $4,454.
How many did you say? Okay.
Move, discussion, approved purchase?
Got a motion to approve?
Sir.
Motion is second, any discussion? Being in all favor with your hands? Thank you, Dave. Item C, alcohol license that were shorted before the last year.
You remember, we had three that had not gotten their money in in time in December. Since that time, all three have paid their money.
Woodbridge as well?
Big part.
Woodbridge as well?
Yes. And they have requested that their, their license be, uh, reviewed.
All paid?
Yeah, try, I have a check right here.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve, Corret's Food Mart, Madelins, and the Woodbridge Inn?
Yes.
Does it move?
A motion?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor with your hands? That's unanimous, thank you, council. Okay, item D, uh, we're talking about Fred's?
Yes.
Request for approval to continue alcohol license, Fred.
Fred's has submitted a license, and they started their advertising like they're supposed to, and we're asking if you could take their license for another month. We have, uh, in fact, I got back their, uh, fingerprints today, so they're good there. All they need to do is, is compile the signage and the license of the advertising for four weeks, and then they'll be ready to go.
Entertain a motion?
If a motion threads be allowed to continue on with the, uh, application process.
Got a motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor with your hands? Thank you, council, that's unanimous, John, do you vote? See ya. Uh, annual audit firm request for approval, approval, Ms. Lisa?
Uh, in your packet, I put, uh, a copy of the minutes from June 6, 2016, where, uh, when Clay Pilgrim came to present that audit, uh, it's on the second page, uh, he promised to keep the price at $17,290 for the next three years. This is the second of those years for 2016.
How did the council vote on that, please?
Uh, they voted, uh, the County Fountain made a motion to approve the continued use of Rushden and Company for the city's 2016 audit at the price of $17,290, with the option of two more years at the same price. Councilmember Anne Snavy seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously.
And council, that's all about the discussion we had at workshop, if there's any questions you have on that?
And behind those minutes, I have included a copy of the engagement letter, which is our contract with Rushden and Company.
And then we need to approve son of that, uh, letter? We need to find a motion to approve that in the, uh, contract.
Engagement letter.
That's what I said. Did a lot. Sorry about that, got a motion? Got a motion is second, discussion? Being in all favor with your hands? Thank you, council. Okay, Mayor's report, economic development, Jerry Nekka talk.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I would offer, uh, just, just one, uh, one piece of information, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and that is the, uh, festival merchants association, did want to be here this evening to give an update on the New Year's festival. Kurt Ratfield is planning on coming next month to give you an in-depth report. First of all, he does thank the mayor and council for their support on this. He felt like the event went well, felt like it was safe, and, uh, people really enjoyed it. He estimated there was about, probably on average, about 350 people that came and went during the evening, ramped up towards midnight. Uh, he said the restaurants and everyone was very pleased with the attendance, and overall, uh, it turned out to be a very nice event for the community in spite of the bitter cold. And again, he wanted to share that report with you, and, uh, said that he would be here next month to provide a more in-depth report. So unless there's any questions, and I know everybody's coming back to get to the television, uh, I'll, I'll conclude or answer any questions.
That's all you have to report?
Uh, I could go into more detail.
I'd like to hear a little bit about what's going on in the economic development around the city of Jasper.
Okay, very good. Uh, one of the items on the horizon is that the, uh, the independent film company that has been working on this project for quite some time will, uh, start shooting probably next month. It is an independent company, so you really won't have big-name stars, but it does give a good return to the community, because they'll be here 30 to 45 days. They'll be spending money here, they'll be hiring people, and, uh, and that's where we'll get a good economic development, or, excuse me, a good, uh, economic return to the community. Uh, through the chamber in economic development, there was also a 12 Days of Christmas in the South initiative, uh, that was done in conjunction with our tourism committee and downtown merchants. The idea was to try to bring people into the community to spend money, as well as keep people here shopping locally. Uh, the kickoff, there was a little bit of tamper on that, because that took place during the snowstorm, so they didn't get the, the big kickoff that they had wanted or anticipated. But the event was a, a, overall, a good success, and, uh, and I did think it achieved its goal, if you can-
What day was that on?
The kickoff, I can't remember the date, Mayor.
Back in November?
When we had that snow, where-
December, April, April.
Yeah, early, early December.
Same as the council meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't remember the same month. When we had the, when we had the unexpected snow, it was supposed to be just a little smattering, and, uh-
December, right?
Okay, thank you. So, it, yeah, all things considered, they were, they were pleased with that initiative. A couple of other things, you know, we've been working very closely with the railroad company, was acquired by Patriot Rail. Uh, they have how they change in their personnel, so their local representative, uh, is a individual. I have not met with her yet, and I plan to do that, because although there has been some issue relating to the, uh, property where I'd love to say an industrial park, having the railroad on board and, uh, and working with us is a key, uh, item of that, and I definitely will be, excuse me, meeting with them as much as I can. Let me do my notes, just to make sure that I'm not, we're looking anything of, uh, of recent. One other item, it's a little bit, it's a little early in the process, but we do have a, a group, it's a micro brewery that is looking at different locations within the community. One of the individuals in that group does reside here, and has a strong desire to locate that business here. I will say during the holidays, I went up to Asheville, North Carolina, which in our area is probably one of the, um, they have probably more micro breweries and brew pubs than anywhere else in the southeast. And it is tremendous, the, uh, the draw that those locations provide. One of the things that will probably be coming forward to the ci, with the city council, or to the city in the future, is right now, the city ordinance relating to breweries limits them to be within an industrial area. We will have a greater return if this location can be within a commercial zone. And, uh, they do have a strong retail presence on these, uh, type of establishments, because of the changes at the state level. uh, type of establishments because of the changes at the state level, and so if, uh, if there is a way to construct an ordinance that would allow them to locate within a commercial district, thus putting them closer to other commercial locations within the community, I think that would give our community and our, uh, existing businesses the greatest return. So, that's something that probably I hope to come forward with, uh, next month, and, uh, I will say very quickly. I'm going to say that's the, uh, that's the key items, Mayor, that I would down for this month, again, I'll be glad to answer any other questions you may have, but.
That's the only thing to consider, concerning, kind of, Jack, Georgia, maybe Piggins County, maybe something that will put people worth, like jobs, uh, maybe we talk about it next month. Okay, thank you. Ms. Oil Financial Report?
In your packet, you have a financial report for the month of December 17, uh, for last, for the month of, of December, we received $100,471 in, uh, local option sales tax, which was, that actually was for sales in November, so that was a pretty good month for us, a year before, the same month, it's $89,612. Um, we, all the partners at this time are under budget, but we are, um, starting our closeout of the year, and we'll be booking a lot of receivables and, uh, payables, and these numbers will definitely change. Uh, splosh, we took in $78,187 compared to $69,737 last year at this time. Uh, cash balance at the end of the year is $374,940. And that's all I.
One thousand and one again?
Cash balance, $374,940.
Splosh.
Splosh, balance, cash balance at the end of the year. So, that's all I had really to go over, unless I have any questions.
Questions, counsel? Rose, another report, line?
Mayor and counsel, uh, there've been questions about when we were going to resurface Main Street and the streets around town, those are on the list for the first bid package that's just going to be going out for the spring, resurfacing, there'll be approximately 14 roper streets around Main Street and a part of north and south Main Street that have already been resurfaced. Then once those are done, in the next bid package, we need to start moving toward the 4th lane and getting access streets and everything up and down the 4th lane in order to have, uh, finish out our payment system, resurfacing system. Uh, the only other thing I have is just the city crews that have had, uh, stopping leaks and working on busted water lines during this cold. If you have any questions.
How's our signs going?
I've got my first ship of the signs in, we're ready to start putting up the brackets, uh, they, they're finally out here, so we've got brackets, and some of the larger ones, I mean, like Philadelphia Road, those signs are about 12 inches wide, four feet long, so we've got to make sure that they're secure because them wasn't down by 15. And we've ordered the largest signs first for by 15, so the next order will be smaller signs, and so the cost per sign should be coming down also.
Says we gotta do it.
Okay. Chief Loeb?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Yes, Police Department, for the month of December, responding to 780 calls from 911 centers, for grand toll in the year 2010, 823, which may be the highest we've ever reached. Responding to 51 motor vehicle accidents, 26 citation issued by the police department, five speeding, one for shoplifting, one unsecured motors, 18 miscellaneous violations, one suspended over road. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of 89 citations for grand toll, the city court 115, 44 state warrants for taking, 35, step-by-taking, Mr. Mayor, step-by-taking felony felony obstruction, one DUI, fleeing, attempting to elude officers, one reckless driving, one driver while suspended, one failed to maintain lane, one shoplifting, one battery. Miscellaneous calls responding to is 38 longer calls, 18 disorderly, 24 harassment, one trespassing or, and 78, uh, suspicious activity reports, and 13 domestics, no burglaries.
Questions, counsel? That'd be great. You may head home. Chief Loeb?
In the evening, Mayor and counsel, I know the chess match is just Cody Brady about what.
I'm here from Mount Mount.
During the month of December, the city's fire department responded to 110 emergencies. Those were no structure fires inside the city, one outside the city, no vehicle fires in or out, no grass fires in or out, 10 motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city and outside, 50 emergency medical responses inside the city, 28 outside, 10 other calls in, 11 out, as always, anything that's not listed above. As of the end of the year, it was 1,464 calls in the year total. Fire dispatchers looked at reset the plans for construction, nothing, 15 inspections.
Thank you, chief, questions? Good month, thank you. Mr. Faust, you have anything to offer?
I don't wrestling's going, watch paper for baseball. Get you going strong.
Been no other business.